Comments, updates, whatever. No? Um, let's see. Okay, second, February 24th minutes. Has everyone read the minutes?
So Bernard, this is. And I just wanted to let you know that the 24th is the hearing. Was your was your hearing, so you have the transcript that was produced. Per the group's request from. Your meeting on March 1st and the March 1st meeting minutes are almost complete, but they are not final. You can see what I've done so far in the OneDrive folder. So I can, I would recommend that you not vote on anything. But you do have the transcript and a rough draft of the minutes for folks to review before your next meeting.
Okay, thank you Devon.
Devon, do we all have the transcript? There was no packet, right?
I shared. Yeah, I shared the OneDrive folder a couple, like maybe an hour plus ago. The transcript just came in today.
Because the town calendar has no packet, but. All right, I'll look for that. Thank you.
Yeah, there are no, no one sent me any supporting meeting documents for this meeting, so there's no packet.
Oh, so the transcript is was just in a OneDrive email?
Yeah, until the group decides what they want to do with it. I figured, you know, you might want to adopt, accept it and then vote to put it on your website. And that obviously was not noticed for this agenda, so I assumed that would maybe take place at your next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
We have to meet again? Yeah, okay, okay, so our next preparation for the public hearing of the select board on March 16. Can we do the screen share now? Let's see, click on screen share and.
Paul Ye is in the in the waiting room to be entered into the meeting.
Okay, Devon, can you let him in? Okay, so um. Public hearing summary, is that what I do? Okay. Does that work?
Yep, I see it.
Okay, so it's my browser, not my desktop, I hope. Okay, so last meeting, we set up a couple of meetings ago, whenever. We set up a drafting committee to work on finalizing the report. And also they've been working on preparing a a preparing the materials for the hearing. And those materials are. A summary of the recommendations of the committee. And and it includes a bunch of links. So I'd like to just sort of go through this and if people have comments. You know, for the drafting committee, please let them, you know, let us know. We're not going to, you know, read it in detail. I mean, it's not that long, but I just want to give you a sense of. You know, what what is in this? So first page we have is our introduction. Public comments requested on the following reforms that the committee has implemented or is requesting the select board to vote approval. In addition, the committee has identified many recommendations to the police department and other town departments to consider for improvements. And those are listed in slides presented to the select board on March 2nd, and I have a link here to that, those slides. And then the Subcommittee on Civil Rights Militarization and Mass Events has also responded to questions presented by community leaders. And there's a link here. That includes something that Paul Ye wrote, which I thought was a very good summary of. Of police procedures in response to some questions. For example, the. The question of whether a Philando Castillo situation could develop here in Brookline. Do you want to say anything more about that, Paul? Is Paul in?
Yeah, he's in, but he's muted. Here he goes.
Uh, sure. So. That was one of the things I I think. As 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 I listen. To the community looking at changes on police reform. That case really stands out. Dramatically about what could happen. With police officers who are not well trained. And what? And it was very tragic. Obviously, that was the death of. This black driver who was in a car with his girlfriend and the girlfriend. Put the whole thing on Facebook as it was happening. The driver was had a firearm, but he was licensed to carry a firearm in the state of Minnesota. And the police officer nonetheless shot and killed him and later was found. Not guilty of that crime. So it's been cited several times that that could happen in in Brookline. Obviously, anything is possible to happen. But the the data shows that there's very few instances. And it's rare that Brooklyn Police Officer would take out a firearm. We went over the data for the last three years. We don't want to go all the way back. So for the last three years, there's been six instances where a firearm was unholstered by the police officer. During or. At a traffic stop or event, and we put all that in, the firearm was notified in these three years. We also put in number of stops that occurs in Brookline over over these three years. And the number of times the police officer has taken out his or her firearm. So in 2018, firearm firearm was displayed twice. In 2018, there were over 9,000 traffic stops. In 2019, a firearm was displayed once. And in 2019, there were over 13,000 traffic stops. In 2020, a firearm was displayed three times and there were 3,400 traffic stops. We also put in this memo to to the police reform members. Because there will be interaction and discussions about police reform. And the types of cases. That were involved in these three cases and the details in each. In the memo, I would ask that you you look at each one of them and see that this is a rare occurrence. That the police officer, when he or she takes out a firearm. It is during those circumstances where his or her life would be threatened objectively. And we also went over why this is so. And the reason this is so is that because of the training and because of the policies and procedures in the manual. The police department conducts a minimum of 48 hours of in-service training per year. That serve in-service training. Includes the use of force and that use of force policy is in the manual. Inside this memo that I I wrote on behalf of the Civil Rights Subcommittee. If you click on the hyperlink, it'll take you right to the use of. Portion of the Brooklyn Police Department manual and you can look for yourself how detailed it is and. What? Policies that the police have to follow.
Okay, and let me just add one other thing that I put in there. I got some information from Paul Campbell. I think I shared this with you, Paul, so I hope you don't object, but. The issue of when is a use of force documented? And the Brooklyn Police Department will document a use of force whenever a gun or some other piece of equipment is unholstered. It's interesting to compare that to the FBI's definition of use of force. You know, they have a nationwide survey seeking information on use of force. And their definition of use of force is when a weapon is discharged and there's injury or death to an individual. So much narrower definition of use of force is being, you know. Provided to the FBI from, you know, thousands of police departments across the country. But anyway, I I think that that's, you know, I urge people to to review that. And Devon, could we make the summary document available to the entire committee if it's not already available?
Are you talking about this document that you're sharing right now?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I guess Paul would have to go in and share it, right?
No, anyone who is an editor can share, so. I, if you need me to, I can go and put everyone's email addresses in there.
Okay, that'd be cool. Okay, and then we go into implemented reforms to be ratified by the select board. Main, I want to, I want to emphasize, you know, the main one is the PCAC, but we also have.
Bernard, I interrupt. I want to say something about Paul's document. I thought it was very good. I did give some suggestions for it. I just got it sometime this afternoon and sent in some suggestions, so. I hope that they'll be at least looked at before it gets finalized. And one of them I needed to send also to Michael. Zurov to double check about the that we've had almost no. Excessive force complaints and the main ones that we've had have been about people being arrested, basically. So anyway, I hope that that'll again. Be looked at by Paul and see if he wants to add anything. I also thought especially that the. It wasn't just training, it should be mentioned because. There's things like policy supervision and the overall culture, so I wouldn't narrow it to just training. Anyway, I sent all that to Paul. Two or three hours ago.
So Devon, here's a technical question. If if we go into. The questionable assumptions document through the link in the summary document. And make changes to the questionable assumptions document, are those changes going to stick?
Yes, but you cannot make changes through the link in that document. Folks would need to be editors. They would need, someone would need to share that document with all of the committee members and they would need to be editors. Once this document is final, the hearing summary document, you know, any Google Docs that are hyperlinked within this document will be in their most final form. Because it's an auto-saving live, you know, living document, but you cannot get to it and edit it through the summary document. Each each editor would need, you know, permission.
Right, okay. Do you understand that, Paul?
Yes. Also. Perhaps we could just send send that out in the PDF as a draft right now to to all the the members of the police reform. Committee. Because as a discussion, you know, swirls within the community about police reform. I I think these are really important points for everybody to consider as we consider, you know, what policy changes we should have. And these are questionable assumptions that, you know, that are being made about the Brookline Police Department. In that new year. I just want to be able to have our committee weigh in on that, that these perhaps assumptions should be questioned.
Right. So. I guess Devon and I and Paul have to, you know, work on. You know, any changes that people offer. It's not as easy as I thought, but we'll do that, so.
Have a question.
Yes.
Okay, so. For the select board hearing on on Tuesday. Is this all going to be summarized? I mean, I know you you are going to be speaking and then Rob is going to be speaking or vice versa. And then we're opening up for public comment and I'm, how much of this content is going to be spelled out at that particular time?
Okay, I'm just going to refer to it, direct people to it and then talk about the committee. And maybe a couple of other things, but no, I do not want to read this. I mean, that that. Okay, so. Okay, so then there is the implemented reforms. That presumably will be ratified by the select board. Now, I'm not sure why someone put in civilian complaint form, which is not finalized. So I'm not sure if that should be there. What 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 do people think?
What do you mean by that? The complaint, the form, like the, what we're talking about here is that you can now file a complaint through the website directly. It's the the online.
Oh, okay, so I'm sorry, I I thought this was the civilian. Complaint policy.
Yeah, that makes sense. This is the form.
Right, I just want to comment on that because at first I said online police complaint form. And I changed it to online citizen complaint form, which is still currently the formal title. On that, and so I've been in communication with Lieutenant Campbell to see about changing that to online civilian complaint form, which I believe Bobby Nabel and Kelly Race suggested several years ago and it never went through the formal approval process, but. I think this was my comment to you earlier, Bernard, that I think. Through Chief Morgan and Lieutenant Campbell's office, those four, that, you know, very simple administrative change of the word citizen to civilian could be made. Should go ahead and do that, but it'll be on several places. The Select Board website mentions it, the Police Department, the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations, the actual forms and whatnot. But I think if that's administratively approved, we can go ahead and take care of that.
Yeah.
I hate to be a pain in the neck again, emphasizing again. But I was not in agreement with that recommendation by Bobby and Kelly. And I think it's something that should be discussed a little bit.
I'm sorry, go ahead, finish your sentence.
I like to emphasize that it's a civilian review.
Well, that's what we're talking about. That's what we're saying.
Well, what the new form, I guess I maybe I misunderstood what Casey said. I thought that she was proposing to adopt that proposal by Kelly and Bobby, which none of us on this committee have discussed in the in this.
Citizen versus the word civilian.
All right.
Sorry?
All we're talking about here is the word citizen versus the word civilian in the name of the form.
Right, and this is not the complaint policy.
Well, I don't have the form you're talking. I didn't see these links. Devon, I think, sent me an email and maybe I'll look at it now.
No, this is, this is something that happened months ago that we discussed at our meeting, the sub at the Subcommittee level and at the committee level and that the IT department just did. I believe with some consultation with the Police Department. All we're talking about here is that now you can file a complaint against a police employee through a form on the department's website. Instead of having to print it out and mail it in. That's all this is about. And and Casey's pointing out the word civilian as opposed to the word citizen, or I guess Bernard is is pointing that out.
All right, well, all right, we, this is going to be, the entire complaint process is going to be looked at at some point.
That's a separate issue.
But this form would be part of that, is what I think.
No, this already happened. This is, this is.
This is the same form that's been out there for a long time.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is if the complaint process is looked at, this form could be looked at.
Yeah, well, okay, no, if the complaint policy is changed. Then what is behind the civilian complaint form will be changed, but the name of it will remain.
I don't know.
Yes, it will.
Well, I may not, I may not agree with that.
Yeah, I don't. Is objecting to. I think we should just move on and.
I'll just follow up with on our end to make sure that all of our documents are updated and everything's in, moving forward with with the title of it as we see it here on the on the screen.
Okay, and then we have the civilian feedback forum for police interactions. That's the thing that Ron put together. Do we have a link for that?
Well, okay. You have a link. It's a link to my draft, okay? It isn't actually, it isn't live yet at the police. Once you approve it.
I told the select board last night that this is not going to go live, so you should just go live.
You just told him, okay, okay, so.
I mean, it's not something we need to vote on.
Okay, fine, so what you're saying is at last night's select board meeting, you essentially said gave the go ahead for it to go live.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, fine, that's good. Okay, so I'll just pass it on to the IT department.
Okay. And could you? Could you send me the most recent version of that?
Yeah, I sent you the most recent draft version, you know, and which is what I'm going to send to the IT department. The only, the 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 only difference, changes the IT department will make. Is that they will put in, at the bottom of the form, there are links to the complaint and commendation form, which are not in my draft, but they know to put the links in. And they're also going to put at the header, they're also going to put the Brookline Town logo on at the top of the form. That's pretty much it.
Yeah, okay, thirdly revised oath of office and is is Dan on? Okay, so this is something that is going to be done administratively. Apparently, the Clerk's Office, as I understand it, just comes up with the form of the oath of office that's used. So, you know, I asked the Chief Morgan to, you know, present something that has. Reference to the US Constitution and he did that. And did I, I don't think I circulated, but I'll circulate that if anyone has any. You know, questions or comments or objections, you know, we can do that, but that's something that we should just should get done. Before the next crop of officers come in or before, and this is what Chief Morgan recommended, before anyone is promoted. At which point they should take the oath again. at which point they should take the oath again, so. And then the homeless, these are things.
Bernard, can we see the oath on the screen?
I am at, I have a computer issue. So my the oath is on my desktop computer, not on the laptop, so.
Does it mention the Mass Declaration of Rights?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
We wouldn't forget, Marty.
Well, the SJC is sometimes in various places said it's stronger than the Bill of Rights. Thank you.
Now, that's an important point and and one of the reasons why apparent apparently it's not in the oaths that are used here in Massachusetts is that Massachusetts Constitution predates the US Constitution. In addition to having stronger individual rights, so. But, you know, I I think in light of what happened January 6th, you know, you know, people should be very clear that, you know, we don't want them to overthrow the US government as well as not overthrow the Commonwealth.
Bernard, may I give thirty second mention about the Declaration of Rights? There was a unanimous vote by Brookline Town Meeting in the seven, I think it was seventeen eighty seven or so, rejecting a federal constitution unless it adds a Bill of Rights.
Really?
I have that resolution if you want to see it later.
Yeah, that just I'm I'm curious. Yeah, send that to me. That's interesting. Of course, you know, many states objected to the Constitution without a Bill of Rights, which is why we have a Bill of Rights. Okay, then another reform that was implemented. And I I put it here to be ratified by the select board, although I guess I don't know what that means. But yes, the homelessness task force, which is not really anything new, other than just, I I think it could be characterized, and Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, as adding email addresses of additional individuals and agencies to that sort of working group that the Police Department has been using all along. Is that is that accurate way of putting it?
Yeah, that's correct. We're just formalizing a bit the relationships between various agencies that are affected by homelessness and serve homelessness in our community and being a little more, you know, strategic about how we go about addressing the longer term problems. So, yeah, it's a working group of various predominantly town agencies.
Yeah, so I don't think we should say to be ratified by the select board. What 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 do people think?
It has to be approved.
Well, no, it doesn't need approval. It's it's just, I mean, why would it need approval?
Acknowledged and endorsed by the select board?
I like that.
Okay, acknowledged and endorsed.
What is the exact proposal?
The proposal is is the acknowledgement, okay, let me write it in. Okay, I don't, this is not live, so I can't type anything in. Okay, acknowledged, acknowledged and endorsed.
Okay, what is, I'd like the early part of the sentence. What's being acknowledged and endorsed?
Well, the the four items in this list here. And we're talking about homelessness task force now, which was a thank you, Michael. Okay. Which is, which is a, well, Casey, you explain what it is. I mean, it's a group of folks who have been getting together to deal with homelessness issues. And Casey decided to expand it to include other people that 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 need to be part of it in order to make this more effect, make it more effective, right?
You got it.
Okay. So those are things that, you know, we just did. And, you know, I I just want to make sure that people are aware of this so that when when they they attack us, you know, they they know that, you know, they're attacking you know, things that are already out there and doing good jobs or good work.
Um, may I, another question? I I I'm happy to have made that vote. Is the homelessness task force spelled out anywhere? What is that? Is that the footnote?
So Marty, I've presenting on the homelessness task force at most of our meetings. We've now had two meetings.
No, I mean, is it spelled out for future reference as to what that vote refers to?
Isn't it in the report of your.
It's in the report, yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, it is.
The the agencies that have been participating, we're actually working now kind of on a goals and mission, you know, so that we have some framework of of what's expected of the various departments that are that are being asked to sit at the table and, you know, identifying what some of the issues are and making sure that the proper agencies to deal with those issues are are dealing with them.
Okay, so should that vote say as as stated in the report, something like that?
I don't see why. I think all of this is summarizing the committee's work, which is also summarized in the report.
Yeah, yeah.
But I did just want to make one one brief comment because Bernard mentioned displaying these things as if it was only relevant to people who are criticizing our.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think this is a, we're saying these things because they're important things that we've accomplished and we want people to know about them.
Yeah.
Not, yeah, that's that's really all it is.
So I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay, so now these are the, these are our main recommendations to the select board that we want them to vote on. First, of course, the most important one is Police Advisory, Police Commissioner Advisory Committee. And I have a link to the actual charge that we put together. Although what is it in final form, Michael?
I think at this point, we we will need to change some description of the diversity liaison in the report in the charge to ensure that we don't get hit with an unfair, or what's the word? Unfair labor practice by the police union, which is maybe something we we I'd like us to discuss a bit more in detail. But I think by the time this gets to the select board, you know, I think we'll have a final charge. Of course, the select board can modify it, but I think it will be final as of the the hearing.
Yeah, okay, and and let's talk about that when we get to the subcommittee reports.
That sounds good.
Okay, by the way, let me just mention and and people should respond if they want. There's that footnote there. I was asked to sort of talk about the committee, not in terms of, you know, the individual members, but in terms of the breadth of experience and perspectives and expertise that they represent. So I put in that that footnote. And it it, the source of the footnote is up here in the title. And that may not be the best place for it, but that's what it is now. So if anyone has any comments on that, you know, you know, please give them to us. I'll put it up on a screen. Let's see, how can you? I can't get this to work. Okay, so why, you know, people can, you know, look at that they want.
It's funny, I think I think that states it very well. What what's it's it's going to be interesting. I'm already imagining the kinds of reactions that we'll we'll get from various from various groups around town. Various individuals, but anyway.
Yeah.
Bernard, Paul will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it should say retired judge.
Oh, okay, good point. Don't, oh, I didn't say that. I was thinking of saying retired or or former judge. Michael, could you fix that? Paul, do you call yourself a former judge or a retired judge?
Retired.
Okay.
Says emphatically.
I know the feeling. I'm emphatically retired from the law too. Okay, and then I I wanted to put down the specific requests, our staff positions that were requesting the town administrator to include in in his budget. And and I put in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three or twenty four because we don't know whether we're even going to have a budget in fiscal year twenty two. And we're going to have a budget, but, you know, it could be pretty ugly. So I I don't want to, you know, try to suggest that we're locking the town into a, you know, this fiscal year because this fiscal year is going to be very difficult. And twenty three may be not as difficult, but still difficult. And we're just hoping that we're out of this by twenty four. So, you know, we're asking for things, but we we want to make sure that we are recognizing the town's difficult fiscal situation. So those items or those positions are, let me get this, part time laid, a part time person. A first part time person in Department of Health and Human Services to assist with services to the homeless first population. Part time diversity liaison in the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations to assist complainants under civilian complaint policy. Town funding through existing full time social worker in the Police Department when their grant funding ends. Now, I think the grant goes for a couple of years, but I want to just put in that we really think this is important. And if the grant ends and we don't get a renewal or a new grant, that the town really should just pick this up. And then funding for an additional full time social worker to sit in either Department of Health and Human Services or the Police Department to support police responses of mental health and substance use calls. Provide follow up services to such calls and assist the current Police Department social worker. Now, you know, there was some back and forth among the drafting committee as to whether we ought to say the person sits in the Police Department or sits in the Health Department. So this is a sort of compromise, and I think that's a decision that can be made, you know, when the person is hired. And then next town funding for a full time or part time data input person and or data analyst is determined to be necessary by the police chief to ensure efficient input and distribution of data on police activities such as traffic stops, field interrogations and arrests. And and this this is an important position. It it may not be necessary to hire someone new, but rather shift around people in the Police Department. But whatever is done is very, very important. And and maybe Paul can very briefly, you know, sort of describe the problems that he had in in getting data from the Police Department, not not because they were resisting or anything, but just because of the way the data was was collected and 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 organized.
So data in in the Police Department organized the way they work, the police officers and the Police Department works and not organized for people like us who want to review data. So say, for instance, a big task that we wanted the Police Department to to give us was data about traffic stops and the details of those traffic stops. So as most people know, if you've ever been stopped for a traffic ticket, you know, everything's handwritten by the police officer. So what happens is that all the data that's handwritten has to be input by a data clerk so that into a spreadsheet in order to generate information for both the Police Reform and the reimagining Task Force. So we had it took a long time for a lot of this data to be generated.
Right. Yeah, and much of it had to be sort of generated manually. And so that's is, you know, a very difficult task and and takes up a lot of time. So we're suggesting let's let's figure out a way of of making the process easier so that the information can be used by the Police Department and reviewed by the PCAC.
Quite question, Bernard. In your discussions with Raul about what we're what's going to be presented at the select board meeting, I I know that many of us have have kind of encouraged that the the things that that the the two groups have in common be emphasized, the common themes that that we can really agree on and go forward, the overlapping stuff. And, you know, I can, I think this is one of the most important things, having been able to get be able to get good, accurate, comprehensive data. But I I I'm pretty sure that there is some people who will see anything that is funded through the Police Department as an unwarranted expansion of the Police Department, even though it's relatively relatively modest and 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 and, in my opinion, pretty objective. So one of the things I'm wondering about is if you and Raul couldn't can agree that this kind of common data collection is in the interest, no matter whether it's in the Police Department or outside of the Police Department, but it's just that in order to 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 do this kind of civilian oversight, well, we have to be, we have to have data, no matter where it's coming from, and it's in the interest of everyone to 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 see it through. Coming from you guys jointly will have a positive effect.
Yeah, no, okay, and I don't think there's any problem with Raul agreeing to that.
Yeah, I I I don't think so either. It's just a matter, I just want to make sure it gets presented by both of you to the to the to the people who will be coming to the hearing.
Good, okay.
Marty has got his hand raised.
Oh, Marty, what's up?
I have my electronic hand raised, but I don't think that usually gets noticed. A couple of questions. First of all, well, just on this last one. It seems to be, should one word be put in there to improve the data because we are keeping data? So it makes it look to me, well, it might look to somebody like we don't keep any of that data.
Yeah.
Let me, then I have a couple of other comments. I don't know if these should, if you should try to prioritize these as opposed to just throwing them in as all being equally imminent. The one that I wanted to get back to, we don't have this document, do we? I don't think. Do we have this document? Because I.
Devin is going to give you access to it.
Okay, well, anyway, can you scroll up higher, please, to the diversity office? Yeah. I personally am not convinced, and frankly, I'm cautiously hopeful that that will not be necessary. And we've never, to my knowledge, taken a this discussion, had a discussion or taken a vote on whether it is necessary. I think that, you know, maybe it'd be a way to make this language a little more flexible. But I, you know, I think until we see what happens, we have anywhere from two to eight complaints a year. We don't know if all the complainants are going to want to want to have a liaison. I mean, it could be one or two a year. So I I think it makes it sound like too onerous a recommendation. If if it's going to need new staff, it may not. But in any event, that won't be clear until it happens. So I don't think that should be as clear cut as most of these others. So I don't know.
Your suggestion.
Okay.
This was your possession.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I mean, so that sounds to me like the the most that we need to change is just to say an added function of the Office of Diversity will be to serve as a liaison without specifying that it's a new part time person or what, but just a function of that office.
You could just put in the word possibly at the beginning.
Well, I, yeah, I think it's important enough to 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 I I think it's important for that for that function to be available, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying take it out.
Yeah, okay, Casey.
Maybe we could put something like provide additional funding for the Office of Diversity, Inclusion and Community Relations to support complainants under the civilian complaint policy, and this could be something in the form of not an additional staff person if it is only two or three complaints a year, but it could. if it is only two or three complaints a year, but it could be in the form of, you know, compensated overtime for somebody on staff. Hours, that would be much more economical there. You don't have to worry about, you know, just benefits and and whatnot for yet an additional person put in on staff.
That's a good idea. I like Ron's idea too. Could you say that again, Ron?
Just say it is an additional function of the Office of Diversity to provide, to be a liaison, to, to provide liaison to complainants or to assist complainants under this civilian complaint policy.
Okay, so I like also what you put in there, Casey. So maybe we can come up with some language that combines the two.
Yeah, I, I'll think, I mean, one other, one additional thing to consider is that the it's not explicit in the charge, but it seems to me most obvious that the diversity liaison would also be the staff person, the main staff person for the PCAC.
Yeah.
Right, I was gonna mention that because that, I think, might be more time than the liaison role.
Right, but combined between those two tasks, I mean, again, I, I'm still not convinced at this point that you have a full-time position, but it does seem to me like it is an additional, additional work on an already overburdened office. So either, yeah, compensated overtime or new part-time staff.
So one of the things that's also going on right now is a review of the harassment, discrimination, retaliation complaint process. And the CDICR or ODICR already has a role in assisting complainants on those. So it may be something as simple as being able to change the charge to be, you know, a broader complaint, you know, either intake or liaison process. But that work is currently going on as well. So we've got sort of parallel tracks going on and so, so there may be, you know, work already being done in that, in that role. The other piece that I will say, and I don't know if, if Lloyd is on the call, is that one of the things that Lloyd has tried to do is to make sure that his office is providing, I won't say neutral assistance, but providing assistance, but not taking a side, if that makes sense. So just something, something to keep in mind as well.
Yeah, that's kind of the role we are hoping to have provided also to people who file complaints against police employees. So it sounds like a very natural.
Okay, so what, what, uh, let's come up with some language. Might as well do it here unless it is more complicated and we need to do it offline, but. Yes, thank you, Michael.
Well, I'm adding something different, but.
We're not have two more comments, but you want to try to resolve this first?
Yeah, let's, let's see if we can do this real quick. I mean, it's not that, that complicated.
I mean, it doesn't seem to me that we, I mean, we could say part-time staff or compensated overtime.
Does that, is that, is that a good way of putting it in?
I think if, if you're able to just say that provide the resources necessary to support these, both the complaint policy and PCAC, leaving that to Lloyd or the town administrator to sort of figure that out gives you the best flexibility with both staff, payroll, and responsibilities.
I like that.
And can I ask a quick question just in looking at the diversity, this diversity position will be fielding complaints against police officers, but potentially also fielding complaints about retaliation, which could be filed by police officers. Is that, is there a mechanism in place to separate those? That seems.
So where, where it could be, for example, where the, the complaints are handled. So for example, if, if, are you saying a retaliation complaint filed by a police officer against a community member or within like inter-staff kind of thing?
Or either, I guess. I'm not, I'm not sure what the role of the new position would be.
So harassment, discrimination, and retaliation policy falls under the jurisdiction. As far as employee-based falls under the HR jurisdiction. So we, we deal with those complaints. Where the complaint comes into CDICR, it is something that Lloyd and I would have a conversation about if it's gonna be relevant to an employee. We have tied those, those into the HR process. It doesn't preclude somebody using either the CDICR process or even the, the civilian complaint process if it's, you know, an outside individual and, and the person of interest is, is a town employee. But for the most part, those town employee-related investigations or complaints are gonna come my way.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure. And I think in the jurisdiction of CAC or something else, you've got the HR director in there anyways. And I don't know if it's the reform side or the, the reimagining side where they, they've got some oversight. So where we sort of are sitting in there already anyways. So.
It is in the charge for the PCAC that the HR department's there and that they should be consulted about referring complaints to the harassment, discrimination, retaliation policy.
I want to say something else about that.
Okay, can we, can I ask, are people satisfied with this editing that Michael did? Okay, let's move on. Yes, Marty, but.
Well, I, I, I still have one from before, one from what Andy just said, and one from this recent edit. The one, let me start with what Andy just said. I believe, and Michael will correct me if he took it out, that the PCAC charge still has something I feel very strongly about to look at the interrelationship between these various complaint procedures. Because that was a big issue on the Warren article to give diversity commission investigative powers. And it wasn't just I who felt that way. It was CTO S, which urged a a study of the various interrelationships. And it did come up in that civil service case by Officer Amy Hall. Is the parallelism and interrelationship and disconnectedness between the different processes. So I don't have a problem with this language, but I'm mostly alerting Anne that, that that's mentioned in the PCAC charge. The second point is when you look at what we've done on B, and it's also gonna relate to my last comment, which I didn't get to make a few minutes ago. I wonder if the introductory language to request the town administrator budget. I find that a little too hard and fast. I would say seriously consider budgeting. It also gets the fact that the priorities different. I will put them all equal. But my last point is this. All of these are important recommendations, and I know they've all been discussed and I don't disagree with them. But it seems to me the gorilla in the room is the overall police budget. And we have strengthened the entire report about the issue of retaining officers and officers leaving. And that could be a serious budget issue that needs to be looked at next year. So I'm not eager to have these be the only budget issues that we highlight. I'd like to have that one highlighted for, for later discussion. Cause I think that is the most important budget issue in the next two years.
Okay. Hey, can we go back to the homelessness task force? There's a question in the Q and A that asks, are there unhoused people participating and on the task force? Okay, and is there a is there, I mean, I can think of many reasons, but is there a particular reason, you know, why that would not be?
It's a working group of town agencies that are looking to support homeless and the issues that come in to the town via residents and requests that come in from our homeless. It's a working group as to how we as a town respond. And I, I don't see necessarily at this point an appropriate avenue to bring in those, the homeless to, to to be involved at the stage that we're at now.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think it's.
Actually, we have members of Brookline Housing Authority that are, that have worked in housing and are, you know, as well as the homeless liaison from the Brookline Community Center. So we do have people certainly engaged very heavily in work around housing. But no, we have not invited unhoused residents yet to sit on a town.
So I think, you know, the idea of having homeless people on this task force, sorry, doesn't make sense. But are there formerly homeless people who may be advocates for homelessness now, who we could reach out to?
Certainly. And I have a member of, there's a member of our police department who I will be engaging in conversation with, who was formerly unhoused and seeking guidance. Those conversations have already begun.
Okay, so I think that that adds a different perspective and maybe you know, some really good ideas as to how to address the underlying issues to homelessness.
I would think that adding a homeless person to a task force would create a quorum issue.
Okay, okay. Okay, so let's, you don't want to discuss that any further, right, Marty?
Well, no, we get back to my general suggestion, the introductory language, but also some reference without a recommendation at this point, that, that the compensation structure has to be looked at in the future with input from the PCAC. If you're talking about the budgets for, you know, the next few years, I would not want to have that left out of here.
Compensation structure for who?
Police department, the police officers, I presume.
What do you, I mean, that, that's, that's part of the personnel subcommittee.
Right, I understand. It was part of the report, and I think it ought to be in, in these highlighted recommendations.
Yeah, I think it is.
I don't see it in what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it is in, in this number two or as far as I can tell, anywhere else here. But if I mean, there's stuff about backfilling vacancies and interim police chief, but I don't see anything about compensation in this document. And if.
Okay, Elizabeth, didn't you, and maybe I failed to put it in. Didn't you have a recommendation on that related to retention and?
Yes. I, I do, I did have a recommendation on that and to do everything, including looking at compensation. We're also gonna include that in the, I think, the police survey report, but I think Marty's right. I think we need to put something in this document that gets at that because that could be a bigger budget, budget pressure than anything else we're talking about here.
Right. But where would it go in this document? I mean, I don't, don't see it as relevant to section two.
Well, we are talking about the budget here. I think you could put something in here, really acknowledging that in addition to these positions, there may be significant budget pressure to correct the compensation required to improve, to deal with the retention problem. That, that might be, I mean, I don't think we should stipulate how much that is. We don't know, but I, I think we've got to start to dig at that. We've got to start to dig at that issue.
I, I think, so my, my suggestion at this point, and open to change and hear other people's perspectives, is that we keep two as is because two is specifically about new staff or new work. But we add a new item three, which is specifically about compensation issues related to police department employees. I'm not sure what exactly the language would be, but something, it's funding related. So I think it should be very close to two, but two is now all about new staff. And so I think it makes the most sense. And yeah, as Janice points out, it's a contract negotiation issue as well.
Exactly. That's a great suggestion, Michael. That's a great suggestion. Let's do that.
Okay. Pardon me?
I, I like Michael's suggestion.
Okay, so Elizabeth, I thought you had some language from the summary we did last week on that. Anyway, why, why don't we just say this? Why, why don't Elizabeth and Michael and, you know, Marty come up with some language? And put it in. Unless you want to do it right now.
No, let's do it offline after we get done and maybe we can just do it. Can we do a Google Doc, Michael and Marty, and just get that done?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, and, and I guess just make sure we, we all agree on and understand what, what it is we're talking about. As I understand, just make a note that for purposes of retention and and promotion issues, there's gonna be a big budget hit that.
Why don't I draft something to you, Michael and Marty, unless you've already done it, Michael, you're probably ten steps ahead of me.
No, 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 I just added a footnote, not a footnote, a footholder. Like if you scroll down a bit, Bernard, I just added a three, nope, scroll up a little more. A new three, that's just a footholder about compensation and incentives retention. And I think whatever Elizabeth's language is that she comes up with, we can add it here for discussion. That's all.
Okay, why don't you add it actually in the document and everyone will have access to it? And, you know, can make any suggestions. And of course, I'm taking a chance here that people are not going to mess up the document. But remember, up here, there's editing mode. So if, and if members of the committee could use the suggesting function in making any suggestions, I think that would make it easier for us to do this without too much confusion.
I don't mean to ask a dumb question. Are you suggesting we all have access to this right now?
Well, we're all, we all are gonna have access to it. And I'm suggesting that offline, people look at the language that will be produced or proposed and make any suggestions.
No, I understand that, but you were not saying that we have access right at this moment.
No.
Okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
This is Devin. I just want to quickly remind folks who are creating and editing Google Docs. If they are being shared with the entire committee, I need access to them so I can post it on the town website so that we aren't in violation of open meeting law if you're editing these documents and you have a quorum.
Okay, so Devin, I gave you access. Do you have it?
And it's shared with your Gmail, I saw. I just shared it with your dot gov email as well.
Yeah, yep, Bernard, I think you shared this with me a couple hours ago. I just was under the impression that the group that was editing it was not a quorum of the committee. So if if it is, then I will need to post it.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we, we could set up a non-quorum group, but I, I wanted what do people think?
Michael and Marty and I are not a quorum.
Right.
But I was suggesting that the entire committee have access to it. Maybe that's not a good idea.
No, I think at this point, we should just post it. I think initially it was not a quorum, but now we are sharing it with more people and we should just, I don't see what the harm is in posting this document. It's gonna be public in like two weeks, so.
Yeah, okay. Good. Good point. Okay, so we have a place order there. Let's see, let's go back to what we're talking about, town funding additional social worker. Okay, we talked about that. E, data input person, we talked about that. F, town funding for benchmark study to enable PCAC to assess the extent of disparate treatment of people of color in vehicle stops and identify changes to reduce that disparity. And I didn't want to say, you know, a windshield study, but rather I want the PCAC to figure out what makes the most sense. And what they can convince the select board to fund, because windshield studies like thirty, forty thousand dollars. And if there's enough accidents in town, I'm not suggesting that people go out and have accidents, but if there are enough accidents in town and accident study could be used to create a benchmark, so.
One of the things I think might be interesting is we, one of the proxies that we tried to use to get a handle on this had to do with, with mining the rush hour traffic data and, you know, the roads, the people coming in and out of Brookline. If, if that could be, and that was just done because the traffic department cared about the traffic at rush hour, but I would think the same techniques, which probably has to do with putting sensors. I would think the same techniques, which probably has to do with putting sensors in the street to count the cars going by. If we had funded putting sensors in the streets on more of a round-the-clock basis, we could see how the traffic patterns change over the course of twenty-four hours or even over a week. And that would be able, and then we would be able to correlate the traffic at different times of the day with the kinds of traffic stops we get at different times of the day. And I think that would also kind of help fine tune and bring insight to the kinds of traffic stops that might change. They might be going on at one o'clock in the morning as opposed to five o'clock in the evening. And I I think that that is another worthwhile means of getting better data.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea, and with the understanding that this is not perfect.
No, it's not perfect.
Not a perfect benchmark, but it does give us some information that, you know, we can use to sort of do further study. But, you know, when people are coming in on rush hour, it's going to be different from the necessarily not necessarily the same as the populations of the places they're coming from, but.
I I want to make two comments. First of all, I this is not a staffing issue, as Michael said before, but I do believe it would be one of the most immediate funding things that ought to be a priority. I'd put it as number one. But put that aside, I don't understand the language. I know what it means, but I don't think it belongs in here. The last words about unidentified changes. That's a very complicated thing that has nothing to do with a benchmark study. And the benchmark study is the only two recognized and sophisticated ways to do a benchmark study are the two that you've mentioned, the windshield study and the crash data. I very much appreciated what Todd Corain did, but it's just not going to fly in terms of being accurate benchmark data. I'm well aware of what the courts have looked at as benchmark data, and that would not would not do it, so.
So, and Michael took out the language you were referring to, and I guess I'd like Paul to explain, or who suggested that language? I think it was Paul. I mean, it's important language, but maybe not, you know, for that, that.
It's just separate from benchmark.
Yeah, yeah.
But my thought was, and perhaps it wasn't, it wasn't conveyed well, and is that we do need a benchmark, because if we don't have a benchmark, right? Say, if we if we make adjustments to policies or whatever, right? How do we measure that? You know, if we don't have any kind of benchmarking? And that was the thought I wanted to convey. So if that was not done correctly, then it should be deleted or changed. I agree. But with respect to benchmarks, I disagree with Marty. I think the more benchmarks we have, the more information we have, it's better for us, because it's more data then, there's more data points. So, you know, I, you know, if if there's other ways to do benchmarks, you know, I'm I'm looking at the the Center for Policing Equity, and that that's what they seem to suggest is to have, you know, look at different benchmarks. So what Ron was saying about, you know, monitoring traffic at different times of the day, that that would, that would be good too. I think the more information that that is present, the better it is for us to evaluate disparities.
So I I think that's true, and the PCAC, you know, will take all that stuff into consideration, you know, the limitations of the traffic study. So someone, Michael made a change to the item F. I know, so he he emphasizes that the purpose of the study would be to help facilitate changes to reduce disparities. Does that? Yeah, okay, good. Okay, um, did you have any other others, Marty?
Well, in the in the initial language at number, for number two, I was wondering if it ought to request the town administrator to to consider these things as opposed to. I mean, we can't mandate anything to the town administrator, but it just strikes me as a little too mandatory here.
Well, the town select board can not mandate, but, you know, give, can request and, you know, strongly urge these things. But what language would you put in there? I don't think that that that's a big issue.
All right, well, I was.
I don't think the language you're suggesting is a big issue.
I I don't care about this as much. I would have said something about to study the budgeting of something like that, but I just found it a little too peremptory.
Well, I actually talked to Mel Kletner about this language in general, and try to come up with something that sort of recognized the process that a budget request goes through. It goes, you know, request to the town administrator who includes it in his budget. And then it gets chewed up by the select board and advisory committee and ultimately town meeting, but.
As they say on TV, I withdraw that objection.
Okay.
Yeah, I think a request is just an ask, right? And that's, that's plenty conciliatory to me.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, new placeholder. Let's see, the request of the town administrator. Okay, this is the police chief issue. What do people think about the language there?
I think I've been the main proponent, and I like it, and I've gotten some good feedback by rumors that he might be open to this.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
What about the feedback from the survey? I don't think there was a hundred percent backing for.
Oh, yeah, there's not a hundred percent backing for Chief Morgan.
How do, how do we address that?
But you'll get a hundred percent backing for anything in our eighty, to be honest. Overwhelming support for for moving forward with filling in these positions, though. I do think that there's wide support for that.
I don't think, if I could add two, two words here, I don't think it's only for additional stability, but it's also to open up positions below chief.
Yeah, that that's item five. I sep- I separated those two issues.
Oh, I see.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, I mean, yes.
One point that did come up in the survey that probably is is worth raising, we may not want to include in this document, but is how many of the officers and and others personnel who respond do want the chief to come from within their ranks? Michael, actually, you probably know
I'm not, I mean, you don't think we should make a recommendation regarding that issue, do you?
Not here. I don't think it's central.
Yeah.
No, I I don't think, I don't think we should include it in the document, but I thought it was important to raise it for the committee.
Yeah, well, I mean, in the report that comes out of the survey, I mean, that should be mentioned, but in this document, I mean, we haven't discussed it to to the point of being able to say this is a recommendation of the committee.
I would, I, yeah, I would agree.
Okay. Okay, and then the second part of this is to instruct the Brookline Police Department to begin backfilling existing and created vacancies. So we apparently have I think three deputy, well, we have superintendent vacancy, because Mark Morgan has moved up to that to the chief. And then I I heard that we have two or three deputy superintendent vacancies. And then we may have some lieutenant vacancies, but I don't really know anything about that. But so we have, let's say there let's say there are just two deputy superintendent vacancies. There are three positions that are going to be opening up for lieutenants. And then, you know, those three lieutenant positions can be backfilled by three sergeants. And then there's an opportunity for three patrol officers to to move into the sergeant ranks. So I think this is an important important recommendation. And, you know, may maybe the, it maybe we should even explain why this is important. And I I really can't articulate it, but I I assume it's because the type of direction that the department needs and yeah, direction that the department needs requires people in all those positions so that, you know, there's enough staffing to actually do things. I'm sure, Casey, can you explain that better than I did?
Again, Bernard, I think you hit that, you know, right on the nail on the head there. I mean, we have a acting chief that's still fulfilling the position of superintendent. We have deputy superintendent who has been out long term. Last year, we had another two that were out long term with with medical, and that creates an incredible void at the upper level where you know, work is being distributed and accomplished that that is really important to the mission, particularly in a year like we're seeing right now. I mean, first, we're we're working on a global pandemic, and then add to that the work that we're doing with our two committees locally and and the and the what we're seeing across the country in terms of, you know, looking at law enforcement and policing and and racial justice. I mean, it's a, it's an extremely important time, and I think having leadership at the top levels to be able to guide the department forward and really progressive and ways is is critical. And without that, you know, it's, it makes it very difficult and it creates burdens for those in those positions beneath there or where things get messed. You know, town meeting alone, you know, can shut down our department for, you know, you know, and town hall and town government, as you all know, for, you know, like a month leading up to town meeting dates and just, you know, addressing issues regarding warrant articles. And when you don't have, you know, the the command staff and upper management to take care of that, it can can be really problematic to the day-to-day operations, which are critically important to department, you know, like like the police department and many others in town.
So my hand raise operate function is working. Bob Sable, you, I think you were first, and then Michael Zirb.
And it's also a retention issue, right, by by providing promotional opportunities.
Yeah, hey, Michael?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I'm just wondering whether there's a way to specify this recommendation. I mean, the BPD is not a person with, and presumably, a human being's decision is or beings' decisions are at play here. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can specify to whom this instruction is is going, like, is this?
Going to the chief?
Is that who it is? I mean, I genuinely don't know.
Dan, are you on the line here?
I I'm on, and it would go to the chief.
So to the acting?
The chief, the chief would would make the recommendations. He has to go through an interview process with everybody. He'll make his recommendations to the town administrator and the board and the select board.
Okay.
So Bernard, can I add, say something, refine that a little bit, friendly amendment?
Yeah.
I mean, the the chief reports to the select board, not to us. So it seems to me that to instruct the select board to
Yeah.
To ask or to instruct the chief.
Yeah, but all, all of these recommendations are to the select board.
Right, that's what I mean. So this sounds like we're instructing the chief to do something. I don't think it should be weird.
The way, yeah, the way it's written, I mean, up at the beginning, it says that major reforms to be presented to the select board.
Okay, all right, all right. So let me make my other point then. That's fine. I I not seeing the document, I forgot that. But the other point about the purpose for this, I agree with what everyone has said about retaining people and also I'd say that it augments the leadership of the department to have all the leadership positions filled. But the third thing in terms of retention is that I also think it's important to promote or to try to promote more diversity in the upper ranks. Because we have much more diversity of females and people of color in the lower ranks, but the upper ranks less so. So I think that this hopefully would help that as well. And I think that's one of the purposes that should be mentioned here.
Yeah, so let me just throw out some ideas that, first of all, I think it's, it is important to put as one sentence, if someone can come up with a concise sentence saying, you know, why it's important to have fully staffed you know, police department and and maybe reference the huge amount of work that's going to be required by the new policing reform law. And secondly, could we put in here something to the effect that this is, this is an opportunity to encourage officers, particularly minority officers to go through, go through the hassle of seeking promotion to sergeant ranks. I mean, the problem is, is it's not an easy process. I mean, and it seems to me kind of a hassle to do that, and it doesn't really pay off for for officers necessarily.
Didn't we, wasn't that part of the personnel recommendations to find ways to encourage people?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think you're supposed to use the word minority anymore.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But also, the other thing is I would add gender or females, because to me, that's an important issue.
Yeah, but minority is not as bad a word as as non-white. There was an article in, I think, the Times on that. So it's actually very good.
Still not good enough.
Yeah, okay.
So I added first crack at this. Anyone can change it. It spills over to the side, to the next page.
I think that in saying encourage, I think it's also not just encouraging greater gender and racial diversity, but also encouraging retention, because for all officers, regardless of their their race, ethnicity, or gender, it it's an encouragement that there's opportunity within the department to to move up in in position and and opportunity.
I I added, that's a good point. I added promote retention.
Or shouldn't I be in supervisory, superv- is supervisory a word?
You could leave I A L out, I think, and it would still be fine.
I would say supervisory.
All right, okay.
Google says it's a word, but I'll, I'll.
Okay.
I'll, I'll change it to supervisory. I obviously don't care.
And shouldn't it be in supervisory ranks?
Yes.
Supervisory positions. Are they considered positions or ranks?
Does it matter?
I don't know.
Positions is accurate.
Okay, good. Okay.
Want to do that other one while we're here? You're so fast. We could probably settle it while we're meeting.
What other one?
That's okay, let's, let's, let's.
All right, all right, all right.
Run out of time.
Okay, okay, next. This is the civil service one. And someone, it was much longer when I first put it in. I just cut and pasted from Elizabeth's report. But this is a, someone suggested we cut it down to the essential things. So this is to request the town administrator to, one, weigh the merits of leaving civil service, and that basically means looking at the pros and cons that Elizabeth's Personnel Subcommittee identified. And then, two, I think it was Michael who suggested this, and I added, Michael didn't include this, begin discussions with police and fire unions, because we found that, you know, from from towns that had left civil service, that it's, it was essential, if you're going to be successful, to get buy-in by the police and fire union. So, you know, I added, begin discussions with police and fire unions. And three, if warranted, immediately begin the process of leaving civil service. So in other words, we're doing, we're gonna, you know, study that, the town administrator is gonna study it. You know, talk with the unions, and then as soon as he's comfortable with, you know, the information he has, start the process.
Can I ask a question? I can't remember if this was a question asked on the survey or not. Did we survey the Did we survey the the BPD staff as to whether or not they would support leaving civil service?
I don't think we did.
But I do recall at least one response about it. Uh, we also got some some responses about Brooklyn becoming a city, which I think is funny. You can't avoid that one. But I, yeah, we didn't ask.
Yeah.
We we did not ask, it's not necessary uh that decision can made at town meeting. And so we didn't think that that was, I mean, that's not a necessary issue. Um, but one thing that we don't include in this point that I think we should think about is that we do want to take into account any changes that are made by the Civil Service Commission as part of the police reform legislation. And that has a date on it of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. So the idea of if warranted, immediately begin the process of leaving civil service. I think there's a, I think really the issue there is to, if warranted, once that information is available, begin the process of leaving civil service. It it may look different. We don't know.
So we don't necessarily need the word immediately?
Right. Okay, um, who 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 wanted to put a time thing on there? Uh, cause I I put it in response to someone's uh comment.
I also raised that too uh about the date. But 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 I I I I think when 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 I spoke to uh Bernard, you said you had already spoken to the town administrator and he wanted to proceed immediately. That was my understanding.
Um, well, he he wanted to proceed. He didn't, he didn't want, he didn't want a lot of, actually, he's on. Maybe he can answer the question himself.
Oh, okay.
The the question of immediately was raised by someone who said, do we, why don't we put in a time uh for this? Um, so, but that wasn't from the.
I'm I'm here. So what was the question?
Okay. Um, we're trying to, the question is, what, well, what is the question?
Well, whether whether you need the word immediately there, yeah, it's, I mean, to to read the whole thing out for, I don't know if Mel can see it. Uh, it it says to, it's one of the charges to the select uh select board is to request the town administrator to one, weigh the merits of leaving civil service, to begin discussions with police and fire unions. And three, uh, and this is where the language comes in, if warranted, immediately begin the process of leaving civil service. And the question is only, do we really need the word immediately? Especially if we want to, we want to make sure that we're waiting to see how civil service changes um in in the fall because of what's going on at the state level.
Okay. Whether you want that language or not.
Pardon me?
I don't think that's really anything I can uh give you advice on. You know, that's really your call.
Yeah, okay.
Can I suggest taking out immediately for another reason? Today's Globe had an editorial that all of the study committees that are supposed to be formed by the police reform bill are not yet even formed. So I don't think that deadline's gonna get met anyway. So I do think that Elizabeth's suggestion about factoring in whatever happens at the state level will be part of this. But I I don't know if that should be added here. I had two other suggestions on this. One at the beginning, number six. Uh, with the language that Michael added at the end of five, you could say for for similar reasons to request. Cause I think it is a big impediment on the uh hiring and promoting process. My second question, I'm gonna throw all these out so you can forget most of them before you answer me. Um, the other question is, is there? I I think there is an option, other than leaving civil service, of doing home rule legislation to get different authority for Brookline under civil service. Am I, am I wrong on that?
Yeah, you're right on that and and uh.
I think that needs needs to be added. And my last comment is gonna be, I don't think begin discussions with unions should come after number one. I think it should be part of number one. And I would say, instead of begin, I would say including discussions with the unions.
Okay.
I don't think you study it without, anyway, I think it's part of the, part of number one.
Yeah, okay, um. Yeah.
I think um we, I think we're probably short on time. I don't, seems to me we should. Are we almost done with this document?
Uh, yeah, uh, we are. We have a lot more to do, but so so maybe we should just schedule another meeting. I did wanna talk about uh the continuance of the work of the committee because uh I'm gonna have to present some type of uh scope of services uh to the select board um to um uh, you know, for for the continuing work that we're gonna be doing. Okay, so what do you, what change, what are you doing there, Michael?
I changed public schools to Brooklyn Public Schools and public housing to Brooklyn Housing Authority. I I don't think these are.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
I have, I I have one comment on both of those. I don't think either of those program discussions, even by the task force, have included respectively the actual housing authority members or the school committee members. And those discussions have to happen.
I don't know what you mean. Uh, we certainly have spoken with the housing authority staff and residents.
Staff, but I'm talking about the elected housing authority.
Ah, the the uh, the elected folks.
Yeah, they they had a meeting last night and and uh the issue of the walk and talk uh um program uh came up and they sort of deferred until the select board acted.
I don't think anyone's talked to them, or the school committee on school resource offices.
Marty, I was actually on that meeting last night and um did give a fairly brief update because there's a primitive public comment. Uh, but they have been through our partners at BHA, provided the recommendations of both the reform committee and the task force um as well as the fact sheet, the um, the various materials, the survey results. They've been provided all of that information. Um, and like I said, there are representatives of both uh reform and reimagining last night on their, on their meeting. And they did discuss at length, there was testimonial, and then they referred uh for further discussion in their April meeting.
I don't see as part of either committee's reports, discussions with either BHA or school committee.
No, we didn't, well, yeah, it's not in 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 that. So we should have. What are you gonna do now?
By the way, this was brought to my attention by John Benzkoj.
Okay, um. Well, you know, the, there may be many other things that we could have done that we didn't do. But, you know, we have our recommendations um and uh, you know, we we can, we can uh present them or send them informally to uh the chairs of the two, two bodies uh just so they're aware of them and uh they can object.
Well, how about, how about adding a preface saying uh something like pending discussion with the BHA and school committee or, I don't know, something just seems to me that you have to acknowledge their role in both of these things. They're independent elected bodies, independent of the select board.
Okay, well, how how about to um to recommend to the BHA uh and, you know, the walk and talk program or recommend to the school committee, the uh school resource officers? I mean. And yeah, because I.
Let me, I have one more thing to say on school resource officers. I I still have some doubt. I I guess I don't have a problem with the, with the overall program. I'm not yet convinced that they need to be physically present in the high school.
That's pretty much what they, what the uh task force is saying. I mean.
Well, I think they want to get rid of the whole program.
Yeah, but but one of the um parenthetical things is that that they, that they say that they haven't got any uh an objection to uh some sort of police liaison outside of the school. That's sort of a fudge factor there. So, yeah, anyway.
And we also haven't heard from the school committee, really in our, we're having the school resource officer there and wearing my other hat as the supervisor of the SRO at the high school. Um, her office is full pretty much all day with students and staff um that are in, you know, consulting with her. I'm talking to her, seeking guidance, you know, working through um various issues. So, I mean, her, her, her presence in the school, um as we've heard from the headmaster and others has been a um very positive and receipt, but happily received presence um despite what what some others may be saying. The people in the school actually have not been pushing back on Officer Caneely's location um and presence in the school. And she's not in in either school full time. She does kind of bounce back and forth between the freshman campus and the high school. Um, and, you know, given COVID, they're they're not even in school on Wednesdays. Um, so, you know, there has not been a um, you know, a massive presence at this point of not only our SRO, but even our students in the public schools, I think.
So interestingly enough, uh, I I like to think about the 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 various kinds of pushback where you get. I presume, and I'm I'm not sure sure about this, that the people who on the, cause I haven't asked uh any of them directly, the people on the task force who say that we don't need SRO officers would say, would simply say that the kinds of functions that the SRO office officer is doing should be in the hands of 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 someone who is non-police. I presume they would say that. Um, and I'm just kind of wondering how you would respond to that. It may be very good responses.
I would presume they would say that. And I would also say that um Officer Caneely's uh role at Brookline High School has not eliminated any other services provided to students. That there's nothing mandating that students go into the SRO's office and speak with her and seek guidance and talk through issues and and whatnot. Um, there are still guidance counselors and there are still, um, you know, school counselors and teachers and other trusted adults in the building. Um, yet students do continue to seek her out. It's not um, not mandatory. I mean, Caitlin does still certainly, Officer Caneely certainly does, you know, is involved with school administration as needed. She's not a disciplinarian, as we know from everything we've produced and and written. Um, she's not a school disciplinarian for for school um violations. And she's there and the students willingly will seek her out and go speak with her. And so that is not, and it's a zero cost for the schools. Um, they do not pay a, pay to have her position there. It does not eliminate another position and certainly does not take away from um the school being able to provide other services.
And by the way, Ron, I um I'd suggest looking at the um fact sheet that was produced uh on the SRO program. Because uh it lists a number of things that are uniquely, um, there are unique uh things that police have uh do. I don't know if that's a good sentence, but um things that are.
Yeah, enhanced services that it, that no one else is providing and that people seek out.
No, no, that no one else can provide. I mean, for example, um, dealing with uh, you know, cyber bullying, uh, you know, threats uh to kids uh, you know, over the internet from um from predators of of one sort or another.
Can I make a suggestion here that might help get rid of this?
Yeah.
Um, at the beginning, to say uh something like pending further discussions with the housing authority and the school committee. And then, then um continue with the language here. But the one thing I'd add is including an examination of the memorandum of understanding. I'm not sure.
So Marty, all of that is included within the recommendations. If you look at the walk and talk program recommendations, I think keeping what is there is appropriate. And then it references within the the recommendations to our subcommittee. Um, you know, further discussion amongst the superintendent and members of of our department. It recommends, um, you know, regular communications with families as well as um other, you know, uh stakeholders such as the school committee and parents and um school administration and teachers uh for that program. And similarly for walk and talk and encouraging, um, you know, additional meetings and focus groups. And I I think that's all, I mean, this is supposed to be really kind of a short bulleted um summary of what is in the more lengthy report. And that's all covered in that report.
I just think that housing authority and school committee need to be added to the.
Well, okay, here here's an idea. Um, why don't we say uh to uh recommend to the school committee and the police department, the continuation of the walk and talk program. And similarly, recommend to the Brooklyn Housing Authority Commissioners and the police department continuation of the um walk and talk program.
Okay, with with enhancements.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, everything else would be the same, but just add um, but do we have enhancements there? That's how we put that.
Yeah, with additional requirements.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So that that would be to uh to um recommend that the select board recommend to the um Brooklyn Housing Authority Commissioners and the police department, the continuation of the walk and talk program.
Okay, I just don't under, I mean, I frankly think this language does not create any confusion. And I don't understand what lengthening the sentence does. I just think we should talk about this offline because I I think we, if we're doing subcommittee reports, it's kind of late.
Yeah, I I agree. It just is lengthening it. And we can, maybe we just flush that out more specifically in the subcommittee report, which this is just designed to to bullet point. I think it is there. Maybe we just need to more specifically add in that and add in those those references.
Okay.
I I still think that those are independent elected boards and they should be
Yeah.
Um, in this sentence, so.
Yes, so as a matter of courtesy, I suggest that the language I suggested um double, double something uh suggested be put in there, be, just to recognize that, you know, we're recommending that they do something, not not uh that the select board do something. Can you do that, Michael?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the um place on the screen. We can move on. We don't need to watch me, right?
Um, but yeah, we should also recommend to the police department.
I don't think they really need the recommendation, but.
Well, um, I mean.
Was it our entire thing directed to the select board as police commissioners?
Okay, never mind. Let's just go on. Um, okay. Let's see, to continue the uh, okay, let me get this right. Okay, to approve the continuance of the work of the committee to uh A, complete the revision of the civilian complaint policy. Uh, that has taken way more time than we thought it would. Um, and I'm gonna just take it over and and, you know, draft something and get other people to uh comment. B, complete the review and analysis of the survey of police departments, warrants, civilian employees and report to the select board. Uh, you know, so so the group that's uh doing the survey should, uh, why do we lose our screen show share?
All right, I thought we were moving on.
No, yeah, we're moving on to the bottom of the screen. Okay. Can you bring it back up? I can't find it. Oh, wait, here it is. Okay, um. Let's see, so so the group working on the survey uh needs to continue working and and produce a report. This will be separate from um, you know, the uh vote that the select board have taken on the thirtieth. Um, and it could be available by the thirtieth. I don't think it's necessary, it's it's necessary that it is available. Um, and then to follow up on survey of Brooklyn Housing Authority residents to capture more input from youth and families, particularly people of color on the walk and talk program and general attitudes toward, towards the S uh after towards uh S on toward uh and experiences with the Brooklyn Police Department.
What does this mean? To follow up in what way? I don't.
Well, we 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 did a survey. It 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 was limited in in many ways. We wanna uh expand on what we found, you know, or.
Specifically, what's going on here is this twofold. First, part of the survey included a question asking respondents if they wanted to be contacted to be interviewed for more detail about their experiences with the program. And maybe a dozen or so people indicated they wanted to be called by the Office of Diversity and interviewed. So that's the follow-up to the survey. And then the second follow-up is outreach to the teen center uh specifically about their experiences. So those are the two. So those are the two, um, follow-up activities.
I'll just, Caitlin is on this meeting, and if we get to her before she needs to log off, she's prepared to update us on her activities regarding both the follow-up to the surveys and the outreach to the teen center.
Maybe she can just do that now, because I, I think that's an important update. I mean, I haven't heard that, so.
Okay, good. Caitlin, can you do that?
Is she there?
Is she on? She, she messaged me just before the meeting and said that she was, um, going to be on the meeting, depending on, um, timing and, um, needs of her little one at home that she would hope to update.
Apparently Madeline needs her assistance.
I can update based on the email she sent me in case she wasn't available, or I can wait until my subcommittee update. It's, it, since we're not rushing to get.
Yeah, I, I think we're really running out of time, so why don't you do that now? Because we may not get to the subcommittee.
Okay, so Caitlin did say that she's been conducting the follow-up calls and they're nearly complete. She had a few more to try, um, because she did not reach them in the last week. She'll send over an updated spreadsheet to the subcommittee, um, within the next week with the results from the follow-ups, and that she has a meeting scheduled on Friday with the teen center to discuss setting up the discussion about walk and talk with some teens and staff.
Well, I, I raised this question. I think the language is fine now that I understand it, but I'm more concerned about number D.
Okay, that's, that's the general catch-all for all the various, uh, recommendations we made, to the, um, Police Department and other town departments.
Sounds very vague to me.
Pardon me?
It's very vague. I mean, it's.
Yeah. What does the word present mean in that sentence? And what, what are we expected to do?
Well, it's a way to sort of cross, to, to link to what was in the, uh, document that was presented, that I presented at the, uh, March 3rd meeting. I don't want to go into, you know, all the recommendations, um, but, you know, uh, but you're just to refer to that so that, um, you know, it's not lost.
Well.
If I can find it.
With great respect, I would, I would take out your Oakums razor and get rid of this whole sentence.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree. I'm a little confused by this one.
Okay, take it out.
I think Bernard, were you thinking suggestions in that bullet in terms of recommendations to like our dispatch center and the Health Department, the, the Office of Diversity that would be picking up kind of some of the lingering, aspects that we've addressed, but maybe recommended tweaking to, you know, further our recommendations.
But, but this is, this falls under, it's in the subheading of to approve and continue the work of the committee to. And so I wasn't sure, I don't understand what.
Okay, that, that's a good point.
It's a little bit hard to remember what subsection we're in, because we can only see on the screen like a few lines of the, the shared document. I think that's probably some of the confusion. We're not sure if we're making recommendations to the Select Board or, um, about larger recommendations or just for our committee work and whatnot.
Okay, for, let me, let me tell you what those recommendations are, and I, I, we can take this out, but, uh, they are, for example, consider including Department of Public Health and Human Services as part of public safety. That was a personnel, um, you know, subcommittee's suggestion. Initially by including it under public safety and budget. Now, uh, if you read the budget, under public safety is not just police and fire, but also the building department. So it's, it's not, it's not, you know, something unusual for us to make this recommendation. Um, and then I, it included is, uh, the BPD worked to implement recommendations of the Civil Rights Subcommittee on entering traffic data, traffic citation data into reports. I mean, that, that's, that's one. Oh, and this one, uh, work to implement recommendations of the Civil Rights Subcommittee, with respect to information gathering, uh, by dispatch supervisor monitoring and training of officers. So, you know, that, that, that subcommittee has a ton of recommendations. I don't want to put that, all of them in this, um, in this document, so this is just sort of a way of making sure that you don't miss that. But, you know, we don't need to do that.
The way I was thinking, uh, the way I was thinking about this was, you know, if, if PCAC is, is established, all those, uh, tasks are going to be within, uh, PCAC's bailiwick. Uh, I, I, you know, for a civil rights committee, uh, subcommittee, I, I, you know, I think it should just cease to exist anymore, because all that's going to be in PCAC if it's established.
But, uh, the, the reason why this is here is so that, you know, uh, when, when, uh, your subcommittee goes away, the PCAC goes and looks at your subcommittee's report, but, but let's not, uh, belabor this. We, we took it out already, right? Okay, and finally, um, alignment with the task force, I know maybe it's a better way of phrasing that, but, um, you know, this is what, what, uh, we talked about, uh, at some point. Committee recommends that it and the task force meet to identify areas where our proposals are aligned and where we can present unified recommendations to the Select Boards. I've talked to, uh, Raul about this, and, um, you know, he, he's, he's on board. Not sure that his committee is, but, you know, we, we at least have a start.
You mean meet together? Is that word missing? That word consensus is a little more optimistic than I would be.
Present, uh, what's a good, better word? Not agreed, but, uh.
Overlapping, shared.
I mean, the, the proposal is to meet with them, right? I guess meet with them.
Yeah.
I don't understand what, what's intended to go here, and I'd also, again, just like to make a time check. I don't know, um, if we want to do subcommittee reports tonight or not, but.
I don't think we can, um, frankly.
Can we look at the language below on the PCAC?
Yeah, that's just an explanation of the PCAC, which I thought should be in this document, because it's such an important part of our, um, yeah, committee's work, so. And that, and that.
Well, sorry, I'll, I'll bring you up in a second. Sorry.
So that's just taken from the existing language, so that, that's okay. I'll withdraw that question.
Yeah, that's basically, I mean, I think someone, uh, worked on it to, I think Michael, um, sort of edited it a little bit to make it a little more coherent.
I, I don't, I haven't done anything with this, so it wasn't me. As Shaggy said, it was not me.
Will we have a chance to look at this later?
Of course you will. I mean, you, you can have access to this document, so, so give me any, um.
All right, well, we'll look at this later. It's too much, but should we get back to that other one about meeting with the task force?
Okay, what, 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 what is your concern that, uh, what is your concern?
Well, I, I don't, I think it's unrealistic to talk about consensus, so I would try to find a different way to word that. But aside from that, I would just add the word meet together or meet with them or something. The way it's worded, I first thought it meant meet separately to talk about each other's proposal.
How about discuss possible joint recommendations?
Okay, that sounds good to me.
But what I don't understand is like what, what this, I, I absolutely think we should do this. I just don't understand what it's doing in this document. Like, are we, are we recommending to the Select Board that the?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thi- this is not under the recommendations. It's like, was it a separate, uh, or piece or part of the thing?
Who's our audience? Like, when we're writing this, this particular idea, who are we talking to?
Um, we're talking to the general public, who I think, you know, people think that, uh, they expect us to try to work together with the task force on things where we agree. This was not my idea.
I, well, I tend to support this. I mean, to the extent that we can, I think, yeah, things are more likely to get done if we both agree with them.
Yes.
So.
Do, do we need this?
Well, yeah, that's my, my sense is like, okay, uh, maybe Bernard or me or Ron or somebody who's enthusiastic about this should, should just do this. I just don't understand what the language is doing in this document. That's all.
Well, I, I actually like it. I, I, I just object to the word consensus, because I think it's hopeless. But, uh, uh, what I would suggest is that the heading say something like, um.
About this, what's wrong with, yeah, possible joint recommendations.
Well, I was just gonna say discuss, um, each other's recommendations, or, I, I don't know.
Yeah, discuss possible joint recommendations.
That's fine with me, too.
Okay, um, uh, so this is not great, but if people are satisfied with that, discuss possible joint recommendations with the task force.
We had the word meet, meet jointly or meet together in the sentence.
What? Do you want me to add the word?
Well, why, why don't we say, okay, um, it's, it's not going to be the task force. It's going to be me and Raul and, and one or two other people.
A subset, a subset of the committee and task force.
Okay.
Yeah. Or representatives from, from its end.
Okay, so thi- this is really just, uh, giving a notice of something, so maybe it should be, uh, the, the committee will be a meeting with representatives, uh, of the task force.
Well, it's basically you and Raul, it seems to me.
Yeah, and, and, um, it suggested that Michael, uh, participate, and then, um, from task force side, Michael Sandman.
Will bond over our shared first names.
The task force will be up to Raul.
Yeah.
Oh no, he agreed to this.
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
So, so I don't think it should be a recommendation. It's just say, the task force will, uh, do this. It's not saying that, you know, we're going to expect anything. I mean, and hopefully we will get something out of it, but. Okay, I think that, that, that's good. Okay, what, okay, anyone having objections to that? I think that's. Okay, so, um, you know, I, I don't think we can, uh, let me see, where's my document? Okay, I don't think we can go into the, uh, subcommittees. Uh, I, this was an important discussion. I think we made a lot of improvements to this document. Uh, it, we still have the placeholder that has to be filled in, so don't forget that. And, uh, w- we need to set another meeting. Do, do you want to do it next week?
The day after.
It should be day after the Select Board hearing, uh, and we can sort of incorporate, uh, anything that comes out of the hearing. And then let me just add right now, um, you, we have, uh, a response to one of the questions from the, uh, prior hearing. We still need to, uh, have answers to the other questions that were, were raised, and someone was gonna put those together. I haven't seen them, though.
Yeah, um, I only put in one, one answer, and I haven't seen the others. It may be a confusion of, 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 of Google Docs or something like that, but, um, but yeah.
Where'd you put that?
Oh, I, I did, um, uh, a Google Doc. Hold on just a sec. I'm gonna try actually and bring it up. Hold on.
So did, um, did you give, uh, sharing privileges?
Yeah, I gave, I think, I believe I gave sharing privileges to, um, Elizabeth, but I'm not sure that, I, she got, she, that I, I did it correctly so that she was notified about it. So we've got to wa, I've got to watch that. So, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to just have an answer to, like, like Paul did to the question about the Flandre Castillo. But I want to answer, I mean, that was an easy, uh, question to respond to. So I want to respond to some of the more, um, uh, difficult ones that, uh, you know, we need to address.
Yeah, the, the one response or the one question that I think I'd, I'd be curious to think about or articulate a response to is that, um, with the notable exception of some of this stuff about retention, like, none of the new staff or work that we're recommending is, is funding for more policing, right? It's funding to assist complainants. It's funding to assist homeless people. It's funding, um, like, to support, uh, data so that we can better address racial profiling and disparate impacts. I mean, we're not, it seems to me, um, advocating for more policing, right? Um, and I think that's an important distinction, is like, we can advocate for greater funds to promote public safety and better policing, but I, it doesn't seem to, we're, we're advocating for spending money on like, greater policing. It's an important distinction.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
Highlighted in, was it number two?
Well, I don't know if it needs to be in this document or, or in this, over this sort of response to questions kind of thing.
Oh.
Yeah, and the, the focus, the focus of this committee is to, to improve, uh, policing. Uh, it's not either to reduce the cost of policing or, or, um, increase it.
I mean, for example, like, we're, we're hoping to add another social worker.
Right.
That is, I mean, as an accounting exercise, you could put that in the Police Department. You could also put it in the Health and Human Services Department. Wherever you put it, it doesn't result in more policing, right? It's, uh, it's spending for social services essentially, that unfortunately often the police end up doing in the absence of alternatives, so that's, um.
Yeah, so what's, what's going to be interesting about the pushback we get is, uh, those, uh, I expect that those people who believe that we should be shrinking the police, uh, will shied anything that even looks like it's going to the Police Department, which is what you're saying, but even when we talk about things like doing just compensation and that, and that sort of stuff, and even when we say that it's important for retention, I think there are people out there who love the idea of people leaving our Police Department, because that's one way of shrinking the Police Department. You know, it's, it's just, there are people out there with that point of view, um, which is a reality. So we just, you know, we just need to talk about the, 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 the reasons for doing positive, effective, uh, you know, 21st first century kinds of, 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 of policing, uh, as opposed, and, 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 well, we can go into a whole thing about that, but I just, thinking about kinds of arguments that are going to come up from people with certain particular points of view, shall I say?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we can, again, be too worried about that. I mean, no matter what we do, we can get those arguments, but we just have to be able to justify what we are proposing.
Yeah, okay.
Based as well, and points out things like the Police Department has been cut positions for in the last three years, I believe, that the fleet maintenance has been cut, that other, you know, budgetary items have been cut from our department, um, as well. I mean, that, the cuts are being made. Our, you know, our recommendations are strengthening service to the community, and I think that's paramount to, um, you know, a reduction in, in, in services or, or finances for a police department who has frankly been being asked to do far more than they're getting compensated for, for many decades. You know, we continue to take on work like dealing with homelessness, um, because other agencies simply weren't doing that. And so we don't need to be punitive in finding the right place for that, but we've continued to expect, um, you know, service and, 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 and work from an organization that was absorbing work that just simply nobody else would do. And so I mean, I think.
That's the way, it's very much the way it's, it's, uh, it's developed over the past generation. Yeah, I just want to mention that, that Google Doc that I stored it, uh, it says that I've got it shared with, uh, six people, Bernard, Elizabeth Child, uh, Devin, uh, Michael Zorub, and Paul Yee. And, uh, it says that, that, that those are the people it shared with. I, I may, uh, have something incorrect about, uh, notifying people. I, I found it, I thought it, it would automatically be sent an email once I, once I set up the share, the share.
Yeah, I got it, Ron. I just.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I found it too. Okay, yeah, just now. Okay, good. Thank you, Ron.
I haven't found it, but I'll, I'll look for it, Ron. Thank you so much. I just wanted to raise a point. I think, Michael Zorub, you're making a really good point, that we're not talking about really increasing policing. And I would, increasing policing in the classic sense of how we understand, but it does get to your question of what is policing? Because if policing is more than just, um, enforcement, but also being a helping agency and what we could, I mean, that's a debatable thing, I think, but it is interesting to think about how, um, really so much of policing. But it is interesting to think about how, really, so much of policing is not about the badge and the gun, but actually about being a member of the community and knowing what's going on in your community, and it's so different if we think, if we're really, and that is maybe, that's maybe more of the reimagining idea, is that it's policing really as a community agency, as a community participant. So, I, I think your point is really good here.
But, you know, every agency is broader than its, its basic mandate. I mean, the library, I mean, they deal with homelessness, and and the schools, they deal with all kinds of social services that, you know, way beyond education, from, from feeding kids to, to, I don't know what else, but, you know, a lot of other things. You know, DPW, it does more than just shovel the, the streets. I mean, it, it, it's part of the homelessness task force, you know, because, I mean, yeah, so there's not an agency in town, I don't think that that is strictly following its, its original mandate. Everyone is doing more because our society has become more complicated, and, and it's not just the failure of, of other agencies. It's really just the complexity of our society.
But no, I think that's a very good point, and maybe something that helps frame how some of these recommendations, they may look like they're increasing people in the police department, but they're actually addressing societal complexities that we have to think more broadly about, how do we tackle that?
Right.
Well, I still feel this should be added somewhere at the beginning or else in the text of number two, that I think it's an important point that ought to be explicit. There are some people that are never going to look at more than these two pages.
Yeah, okay. Yep, and that's why we're writing them. So, what, what, what is it you suggest be in two or somewhere?
Well, something about Michael's language or Elizabeth's language that, I mean, I'm not sure that all the reasons for it need to be in here, but I haven't thought about language, I mean.
Okay, well, yeah, okay.
Especially because I don't see number two here, but I would leave that to you people to try to add something along the lines that Michael first brought up.
Okay, good, I'll, I'll try to do something. Good. Let's set another time for the committee to meet. Why don't we do next Wednesday?
Well, are we having accountability Monday? That would be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday?
What's Tuesday?
That's, that's the select board meeting, where the stuff is going to be presented.
Yeah.
And then vote on the 30th?
Pardon me?
No.
Oh.
Not votes, right?
What's the vote?
The select board vote's going to be on the 30th.
But Tuesday's going to be an important hearing.
Yeah.
I know that people are rallying, the committee, people with various points of view are kind of rallying to definitely say their piece, so.
Okay.
So, Bernard, I have a question about the format for Tuesday night. This is a public hearing held by the select board. So, our role there would just be as listeners and not participants, is that correct?
Yeah, that's my understanding. If the task force starts, you know, having their people respond to questions.
You've got to, you've got to work that out with Raul in advance, so that we're all on the same page.
Okay, but, yeah, working out with him doesn't mean that it's worked out with the task force members.
I actually, to tell you the truth, I think he has a pretty good relationship with him. I think he can, he can, he can manage that, but we'll see.
Where do you find the link for the Tuesday meeting?
It's on the town calendar.
On the town calendar.
If you go to the homepage and scroll down to the calendar, and then click on Tuesday, and then it should give you a link to that with the Zoom link.
Well, you can also, I think, on the homepage, there's something called Brooke Online, where you can sign up for notices of whatever committees you want, including select board.
Oh, okay.
This is Devin. I will be registering all members of the reforms committee, as well as the task force for the meeting on Tuesday. It won't be posted until Friday, but you folks don't need to worry about registering or getting that yourself. You will get a registration email and a confirmation email from me, but I did want to just say, Bernard, I, I didn't intend to promote all of the reforms and task force members during the hearing, as just you and Raul are sort of giving summaries.
Okay.
And that could potentially, you know, solve that issue in its entirety.
Yeah.
Additionally, the select board is entertaining the idea of having a meeting on Thursday, the 18th, exclusively to discuss the policing reports and the outcome of the public hearing in advance of the anticipated votes on the 30th.
Right.
Wow.
Ron, I have a question. When you say you know that there's communities of interest that are kind of mobilizing to be there on Tuesday, are you, are you suggesting there's outreach that our committee should be doing, that we're not, to make sure that we're engaging residents that are impacted by our recommendations?
Well, everyone ought to, you know, inform their networks.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. I mean, I know people forming networks. I, I know that one version of things that I heard was that at, back, back in September, when we had that, that very early hearing, that it was a perception from some people that 100% of the comments were for, from the community, was for preserving the status quo. And so, the way it's going out this time is we have to mobilize to make sure that the, that other points of view are represented. I do think other points of view have to be represented. I was surprised to see that the perception then was that 100% of the points of view were for preserving the status quo. I didn't expect that, but that's clearly the way some people perceived it. So, I'm just letting you know that this is all out there.
Okay, so, you know, make sure your networks are aware of it, and the importance of, you know, attending and participating.
Well, I have one other question, which is that I personally do not favor public hearings that nobody responds to anything. And my question is, if members of the public make statements that are factually inaccurate about our report or about the other report, I mean, is nobody going to answer them at all?
Good question. I mean, what do people think? I mean, that, yeah, I'm always pushing for simplicity in, in things like this, because they can definitely get out of control.
Right?
One at a time.
Casey, I'm sorry.
I think it's just difficult, because, you know, you're in these, you know, Zooms, and there are things being said that are, you know, either basically false or misinterpretation. And then there's also the Q and A that's, you know, kind of working, and then the chat, you know, people that are, you know, asking questions and making statements and, and driving discussions kind of in that forum. It can be, it can be really challenging to, you know, kind of mitigate the, the information that is going out in the sense that, to make, to make sure that people that are tuning in are getting the correct information. And, you know, I don't, I don't think that it is, maybe for the select board hearing, certainly our position, that we should be, you know, engaging in those Q and As and chats anyways. But it, it does happen, it can be extremely distracting in meetings, and, 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 you know.
Let me make a suggestion. I have a suggestion. Those of us that are watching, which will probably be most of us, if there are things that we would like Bernard to respond to, we, is there a way for us to send him a chat or a private chat or a Q and A and ask that that be corrected?
No.
No, yeah, probably not. I, I wonder if, can, can we turn off the chat, Devin? Except for the select board?
Doubt it.
Yeah.
I just, I don't, I don't understand the issue here. I mean, you're.
I'll tell you the issue. Let me tell you the issue. I've been to a lot of things where there's public comment and no one says anything, and I find that kind of rude. The Board of Selectmen, when they do their public comment, they often engage in dialogue. The school committee doesn't. And I think it's an insult to the public, is to have people say things and get zero response. But I especially think it's very bad to the extra public that's just watching, to see false statements made that don't get corrected. I, I don't think that's appropriate.
So, I just, I don't see how this is feasible, and I think it could, it just could result in a lot of.
What I'm talking about is you could end, you could end the public comment and let each chair correct anything that they want.
Okay. No, I, I don't, I don't want to do that. I don't frankly want to spend my Tuesday night.
Take a vote on it, I.
Well, no, no, no.
We can't take your vote anyway, but we can't throw it anyway, but, I mean.
I'm saying subcommittee, you're saying chair in terms of Bernard and Raul would make corrections to fact, you know, information that was presented that was not factual, that was. Clarified, not the subcommittee chairs.
Right.
Right, okay.
So, but, but subcommittee chairs would be sending me chat messages.
Right, I, I mean, frankly, I just don't want to spend my Tuesday monitoring this and sending Bernard messages. I think if there's something that's so egregious and important that we want to respond to it, we can just tell Bernard or speak at a subsequent meeting, but.
The trouble is, the public is not going to be at any. That's, that's the trouble. If someone says something that's, you know, factually wrong, you know, just not true, you want to kind of correct that before people kind of go away believing it.
And you want to do it to their face.
Okay, well, yeah, not to their face. Okay, look, why don't we do it this way? And, and Michael, tell me if, if, if this is consistent with what you're saying. You know, I'll be there and, and take, and I'll monitor the chat room, or the question and answer box, and you know, afterwards, you know, I'll, you know, correct any false statements that were made, or make any comments that people on the committee think should be made.
You know, you know what, I'm, I'm actually good to turn around, but I don't know if this is called best practice, but practices that I've seen work, and this, we aren't necessarily set up for this, unfortunately, is that you've got someone, not the people who are facilitating like you and, and, and Raul, separately monitoring and, and the questions in the chat, and then there comes a particular period in which they say, okay, are there messages in the chat? And then that person does things like, you know, if there are similar questions, they consolidate them and that kind of a thing, and they present the kind of questions sort of one by one, and then, and it gives the, the chairs, that would be you and Raul, an opportunity to respond to those questions. That, you know, as, as, as part of the formal format of the meeting, that's one way I've seen that done, that, that has worked. So, I'm just suggesting that as a possibility.
Yeah, Ron, I agree. I think that's, I've seen that as well, and it's really effective to, you know, occasionally refer back to those, you know, Q and As and chats, and, and clarify and answer questions. I think it can be helpful. Sometimes be overwhelming as well, I think, depending on how many entries there are, as well as public speakers. And so, I, I hope Bernard and Raul have, have staff, I know Devin, you know, will be managing kind of the queuing of people coming in and out. You may want to, Bernard, have a, have a separate individual that's helping you kind of view what's going on there, as well as the task force. You know, have someone that's maybe your direct, like, kind of managing some of those questions and the, and the chats, and queuing you on those, you know, that might be helpful.
Okay, well, one person who could do that really well, so he's not willing to spend his night doing it. So, who would like to do that?
I'm not sure I understand what the suggestion was.
This is Devin. That's also kind of an administrative task. That would mean that the person would need to be promoted to a panelist and have access to the Q and A and chat, just for everyone's understanding. We do not enable the chat during select board meetings. It's used exclusively for logistics coordination with panelists. So, attendees cannot chat each other, nor can they chat panelists. The Q and A feature during webinars, just like this one, is used to pose questions to panelists or queue up for a public comment. So, we don't have a chat feature where, you know, multiple comments can kind of be coming through, and then everyone is seeing them. They're only seen by the panelists, and then they're only seen by attendees if they are answered within the Q and A, and then, or, you know, answered subsequently live.
Okay, so, like, we got that question in the Q and A today about homeless people being on the homeless's task force, so.
Right, so all panelists saw that, but attendees did not see that question until it was addressed.
So, the panelists who would see that would be the select board on Tuesday, and that's something that I can, you know, monitor and respond to after the hearing is closed.
Yeah, and I mean, we also have an agenda planning meeting with you, Heather Hamilton, the vice chair, tomorrow afternoon, and can kind of flesh out the details of how this will be run administratively, as, you know, it's the decision of the select board leadership outside of this.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and I'll try to get, get to Raul right after this meeting. I'm not going to be able to do these things, but to make sure he's on board with that, okay.
Devin, may I ask, are either the chair or the Q and A part of the record of a meeting?
The chat is not, because, like I said, it's really exclusively used for administrative purposes. Like, I inform the chair how many people have signed up for public comment, I tell someone to mute themselves, you know, those types of, you know, give a heads up about what's next. The Q and A, if it is more substantive than just someone saying, I'd like to speak, which is normally what it's used for, we then capture in screenshots, and they are attached to them.
Good.
All right, thank you.
You capture in screenshots, or you cut and paste? I thought you cut and pasted it. Devin? Okay, okay, anything else?
Well, I did want to discuss when we stop meeting. I think there's just this general lack of understanding in my mind as to when this group ceases to exist, and I would really appreciate some clarity on that.
Okay, that's really a function of the tasks that we continue doing, and I think as a practical matter, we'll have to discuss that next week.
Okay, so what, can that be on the agenda for next week, then, to discuss the timeline enclosure of this committee?
Yes, up with that agenda.
Thanks.
And I, I agree with you, things can go on indefinitely. Especially if we get the PCAC up and running, so. Okay, anything else? So, I'll see you next Wednesday at the same time, which was five o'clock, and thank you, everyone. Did, Casey, did you have your hand up?
Nope, I was saying goodbye.
Oh, okay.
So, we're. What about Tuesday?
What about Tuesday?
You'll see a lot of us Tuesday.
Well, that's true.
Yes, yes, and I see some of you on Monday.
Right.
Okay, bye, everyone, thank you.
Bye.